Good evening and welcome to this special session of the Grant County Council. Tonight, the prayer will be led by Mr. Connor with the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Scott, if you would stand.
I'd like you to gather your hymn and pray with me. Heavenly Father, be with us tonight as we do the work to better this county, give us good judgment and discernment, bless all of our county employees, first responders, military overseas. Just be with us and bless our fellowship as we do this work. In Jesus' name and praying for his sake, come in.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, if you would, do the roll call, please.
Scott?
Here.
Connor?
Here.
Hicks?
Here.
Chris?
I haven't heard anything from Mr. Chris.
Pauling?
Here.
Leving?
Here.
Middleworth?
Here.
We do have a form. So tonight, many of you have already been through the process. Tonight's special session is to finalize the budget for 2025. So we'll, we have items to revisit that we did not take action on during the process. And so this meeting is to finalize the budget and get it prepared to pass the October 16th meeting for adoption. So you should have at your table an updated 4B, the one. Angie, would you like to explain what's at the table, please?
The first 4B that's in your stack has the projected operating balance that is December 31st, 2025, at $7,277,615. This reflects everybody's requested salaries, insurance at $21,300, the sheriff's request for $1.6 million. Any of the undecideds is still continued in this 4B because it hasn't been decided. So this is what you're seeing.
Continue.
Continue.
So I did a comparison with three other counties, like, when it's salaries. That is where I came up with the $5,000 increase across the board. All of that is, this is a part of your revisit sheet. Those worksheets are here. It's got the benefit packages for each of those counties to compare to the benefit packages that Grant County has. Do you want me to read this, what it says? Okay. Okay, so I requested a $5,000 across the board for all except the following, except for the following, plus a 10% increase to part-time. Give the prosecutor what he requested and bring up anyone not increased.
I don't seem to have what you're referring to.
It's right here. Yeah, that one, that paper you got right there in your.
That's in your top. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes. So to bring up anybody that did not match a $5,000 across the board for the prosecutor's office, except for the chief deputy prosecutor. Give the PD, the chief deputy's position, requested at the $137,635, which there's a paper in your stack that will show what the chief deputy prosecutor full-time is paid through state. It would also include state-nominated raises. And the sheriff's union, they're still in, they're not asking for a raise this year because of the contract.
Correct.
But I would suggest bringing the longevity-based pay up to the 2023 salaries. And giving the highway recycle E91 and central dispatch a $4,500 raise.
What does the chief deputy make now?
Chief deputy for?
Public defender.
There is an upline.
Oh, there is? Oh, this is the one I'm looking for. Did you ever drink that?
This is the position that they want to be taken.
Yeah. Bruce, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they, the public defender's office was requesting the deputy chief had $150,000.
Correct.
We did meet myself, Mr. Leving, Mr. Scott, with the prosecutor, Scott Hunt, and we did extend an invitation to Mr. Elliott, but I was not able to be in contact with him. And so, yeah, that's where the 150 shouldn't be any more than the deputy prosecutor if that's, if the council so wishes to grant that new position. And the other thing, too, is while we want to try to hammer out all these items tonight, we necessarily don't have to. We can put something off till the next meeting and, you know, do an additional appropriation next year when the budget's approved or whatever. So don't feel like that you have to, we have to make a decision this evening. Well, we'd like to, so we can have the budget ready to go for the adoption on the 16th.
So that's new position, Angie? $137,000, plus they get a $5,000 increase on top of that?
No, that would be just that salary. Now, the other public defenders, they would just see the $5,000 increase.
They would, $137,000 and all other employees to receive $5,000 immigrants. Kind of sounds like.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, but yeah, no, no. It would be set at $137,635 with the rest of the public defenders and staff to receive the $5,000.
And do we have any confirmation that the chief deputy would be, A, full-time? And then if it is full-time, does this person maintain private practice as well? Do we know that yet?
I don't think we can. I think that's.
This position here on the stage is full-time.
Yeah, would.
$137,000, that's full-time position.
I think in my eyes, if you do the $137, you commit to the full-time. And. Yeah, I, I say, we was unable to meet with Bruce.
As it says right below that, part-time is $90,000.
Yeah, they're requesting a $10,000 increase from 50,000 to 60,000. If you'd give the $5,000 raise across the board, that'd be the 50, to the 55,000, which is medium halfway. The problem I know with, I mean, maybe Mr. Connor could chime in, but right now, I know that public defenders don't have an experience in the office. So they, the caseload can't get divided up amongst the new because they don't have as much experience. They have, was it three jury trials or?
I'm not sure what the specifics are that they have to meet, certain minimum requirements.
That $5,000 for the employees, what's that percentage, 13%?
It's going to vary for every employee.
Well, it'd be, it'd be 10 for the.
Stick to their salary.
It'd be 10 for the public defender, $5,000 or $80,000, that's 10.
Well, you've got, most of your employees make well over that.
It's going to maybe based on the overall salary. So it could be little bit or nothing to a lot.
That's why I decided, Chuck had asked me to do a flat rate instead of a percentage because.
I, no, I agree with the flat rate just because of that exact reason. We've been through this many years where somebody making $25,000 doesn't get the same rate as somebody that's making $50,000. So I know, I agree with it. But I see what Chuck's saying, too. He's just trying in his mind, I think, say, well, what is this person getting percentage wise versus what is this person getting percentage wise?
Well, these worksheets, Chuck.
Right.
It's got a column that shows a 10% increase versus the $5,000 increase. So you kind of get to see all these different departments that I did these worksheets on, how much.
But Angie, I mean, trust me, you did a great job. But how does that work out with all of those things that you've done? And with you said, what you said earlier, we're still not to what the rest of the state is? Is that what we're saying, we're still that far behind?
Yes, I, like I said, I'm just comparing these three other counties with us. They have this comparable AVs, comparable.
Census.
Population.
Which is Dearborn, Warwick, and White.
These are also their 2024 salaries.
Okay.
They are going to be getting increases for '25 that's going to put us behind even.
And that makes, and that makes sense. I agree with you.
And these salary increases does reflect this bottom line?
No, there is a, another 4B at the very back of the stack that I gave you. Another 4B. It'll say at the top, my 4B given the proposed raises. It's the very last four in your stack.
In the green, it says, my 4B given the proposal.
This is given the raises that I suggested with the, also my suggestion with the health insurance whole portion that comes out of that. And your bottom dollar is at the bottom. It would be $8,227,732 as your projected operating balance. And that's, again, leaving in all of these outstanding issues as requested, you know, the sheriff's department or the court.
So when it comes to raises, a little bit, talking about AOD, the timekeeping system that the county is trying to implement, and I know it's been a headache for the auditor's office and staff. And so one of the things, if you read the, look at the bottom, and this is in the Commissioner Bailey Wick, so to speak, but I think that if, you know, this is, would be a huge raise, right? I think we could all agree to that, $5,000, at least 10% in most cases. So I got to thinking about how to make the AOD system work a little better for the county employees. And so we could go back to a 40-hour work week, which would be eight to four, but do a paid lunch. Currently, we're doing eight to four at a 35-hour unpaid lunch. That would help some issues with AOD conforming to more of a business standard. It would change the hourly rates from employees that it was figuring the 35-hour, if you went to the 40-hour. The other thing I think that we need to look at is when it comes to comp time, you know, comp time can be abused. I think we got to look at maybe going to a time and a half system, like in the business world, where you get time and a half for any, you know, hours after the 40 hours. I know certain offices like the comp time, I know it can get abused easily, but AOD, I believe it's hard to calculate comp time.
It doesn't like to calculate it fairly. It's not correct. I, I don't trust the calculation of it that they have put in place on the system. I keep track of my girls separately. It doesn't take into consideration when you take sick days or vacation days or birthday holidays, or it, it just doesn't want to calculate properly.
The other thing, too, that, again, this is in the commissioner's handbook, when it comes to sick days, I think we should just do a straight PTO calculating, a set number of days that are paid time off days. Kind of, in the business world, people are getting away from sick days because you call in sick and you don't want to make your employees lie that they're not sick, right? So I think there's some reworking of that. That could be done, too, to help the AOD system. But if we don't make some of these changes, the, what the initial reason for getting the system was for accountability for our employees, clocking in, clocking out, if you're not going to use the system like it's intent, they'll probably be going back to the old way of doing things.
But what we have found with this AOD system is the departments, their intention was to keep track, to make the departments accountable for their time. But you've got department heads that still will go in and manually make those changes. So what's the good of it? What's, what's the point?
So anyways, just to be thinking about that, that's nothing that we can take action on tonight. Obviously, this body could make a recommendation to the commissioners that, you know, we want to go back to the 40-hour work week, eight to five, or eight to four with the paid lunch, and just change some of those little things to help the system. Does that make sense?
So if we made these changes that suggest to the AOD system, you're confident it would work?
I'm not confident of anything it's going to work until I see it in action. I'm hoping that it would improve, yes.
Because I'm an easy employee, you're just paying time and a half, instead of having to deal with all the other stuff.
I believe it would, if it calculates correctly, you know.
So I think when it comes to time and a half and, you know, whether you're getting comp time or time and a half, the commissioners are going to have to specify who is allowed to get, you know, get the overtime.
And you have to budget for it.
Yeah.
I don't think the commissioners have, I don't think they have the oversight or the capability of making that decision for your department heads and elected officials.
It does the employee manual talk about overtime and comp time, how they're supposed to be handled?
It does, but I would have to reread it.
You have to make sure, the commissioners normally adopt that policy, but this body also signs off that as well, I think.
Yeah.
So you'd want to make sure that comp, that manual, or whatever it's called, the compensation, the policy handbook, make sure it reflects what was he done.
And I know they have, we had a group that worked on that policy handbook several years ago, and it's done.
It hasn't been changed to reflect. Bottom line, if you want to do something to change, either overtime or a comp time, you need to make sure your handbook agrees with what you want to do.
So can the commissioners change the handbook?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, commissioners are changing, but I think this body has to sign off on it as well. It's kind of like a new.
Yeah, should have a check and balance, but still.
Usually gets initiated there, but either way, it could initiate it and get the conversation going, I think.
So Angie, if we did go to this, would those same department heads still go in and do those changes that you were speaking of?
More than likely. They have the capability of doing that, and that is, that's written within the system. So, yes.
Is there any way we can throw a red flag to let you know they're doing it?
The only thing that you guys are, the commissioners, would have the capability of going in and reviewing all of it at any time. They have that capability. They can make it known to that department what is going on, but they, they don't have, you know, it's not their department. They're, they're not the elected official for that department.
Some departments they want to, we have the control over the others.
Yes, they just.
The elected official, they wouldn't get a chance to control as much as they would a highway department or someone.
Yeah, but the commissioner, you can go up to it, you can call them out.
Now, the thing of this, if an elected official is not complying with what the compensation or the handbook calls for, that would be an audit.
That would be something to be brought up to the statehood accounts for auditing, yes.
And so that should keep, at least give them a line somewhat, just that if that is reviewed, you're not complying, your fault. That's going to be something that's pointed out at an audit, I would think.
I think the question is, as you ask them, is how would you feel if your name was associated that in the front page of the paper tomorrow?
Yeah, some would like it, some may not care.
I think that a lot of times that maybe they don't remember to clock in at the computer or whatever.
That's different. That's totally different. I mean, you can go in and make those minor changes or doing that, you know, that's, that's minor, but.
Does it show like in red if you do it manually versus?
Yes.
That was what I was thinking.
Yes.
How do we get to the system? Commissioners brought the system forward.
At the time that AOD was implemented, we was having some ghost employment. So there was one accountability for the employees. So they implemented it. I believe the sheriff's department under Reggie really wanted it, so they ended up paying for half of it, did they, the system?
They paid a hefty chunk, like $25,000, or maybe it was half of it. I'm not sure what that exact amount was, but yes, compulsory.
And they still haven't come on board with it yet. And that's been a year.
Yeah, the girls are working with the.
Almost two years.
Over, it'd be two years.
Yeah.
So do we need a new system?
There are other timekeeping systems out there, but I am not familiar with any of them.
We got.
We were brought AOD because of our financial software allow. That is who they recommended.
Got to have accountability, though. I mean, that's make or break in a company or in the government, because, you know, we are the government, guys.
I know.
Built to run how we run.
And ghost employment, that is a very.
Yeah, that's a sticky thing there.
Anyways, I wanted to bring those ideas forward, that way you could be thinking about them. I did have a conversation with Mr. Stewart, and he seemed receptive to the idea of making some of those changes. I did also spoke with Mr. Sadoff, and there were some changes that him and I had already agreed upon. So I guess we can move on to the clerk's request. It's recommended to increase the part-time as requested to $18,403 within the election department. That was due to. The presidential elections. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Pauling, a second from Mr. Leving, to go ahead and increase the part-time overtime request within the clerk's budget, $18,000, to the $18,403. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Leving?
Right.
Scott?
Right.
Hicks?
Yes.
Pauling?
Yes.
Middleworth?
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll move on to the next outstanding issue. You know, we tabled the commissioner or the sheriff's request for the out-of-county inmates. The request was $1.6 million. This body tabled it during the budget process. Personally, I'm recommending that we put it in the budget at a million. Whatever the, whatever that amount is, that it kind of needs to be abided to, because that's going to determine how many out-of-county inmates you're going to have. And I believe it was $40 a day. So that would be, what, 70-some?
73. Well, it was just near 73.
Yeah.
I also need to set a limit on, how many more are we going to do so now?
Yeah, so that, I think that dollar amount should determine the limit that this is, you know, we're going to budget a million dollars roughly, that pays for 73.
It's like 68 and a half, but.
68 and a half.
Yeah, $40 a day.
Still seems like a lot to me.
And I know that the juvenile side of the detention has, the prices went up. Right now, we don't know that the adult amount has gone up or not, it's still hovering at $40 a day.
And I just feel like right now, it's just, it's so open-ended, there's just so many inmates that's being, that's being sent to other facilities. I think, like Chuck said, we need to, we need to put a cap on it somehow, because it's just getting out of control a little bit. So there's going to be a need to have, to be placing some. I guess I would even feel comfortable at $500,000, but I don't know about, I don't know about a million.
Yeah, the request is for 1.6. Do we know how much we've used to date?
I'd like to think that with the conversation on public defender and just what we know about that and the prosecutor, that maybe we can speed up a little bit and not have as many.
Yeah, but who's, who's to say? Like, I called them out when it was either.
Oh, I agree. I'm just saying the conversation was.
They all complained about each other, but now it's payday, they're all patting each other on the back. I mean, guys, we need to really know where it falls so we can help these people fix it. So we are paying all this money.
Mark, is your reasoning that if we raise the pay of the players, the PDs and the prosecutors, that you're going to have people run through the system faster and?
A lot of help is what they're saying.
So when we met with Mr. Hunt.
Not the pay necessarily, but go ahead.
When we met with Mr. Hunt, it was, you know, we've gave him last year everything he requested. My question was, if we give you everything this year as you requested, how do we, how do we know you're hitting the matrix of you're getting more cases through the courts?
I was going to.
So he, he presented a document that shows.
Judge Spitzer, Circuit Court, he has a thing talking about how long they're in the systems and how long it takes to get through, I guess.
I think we need to keep an eye on this. I think we need to remember this moment. If we give that kind of increase to the PDs and the, and the prosecutors, we need to remember these standards and look and see next year if it improved. Because I, I got two big concerns. And you know me, I'm always advocating for good, fair pay for these folks, because we got to have, we got to have these attorneys in place. But I can tell you, we're getting up above what the private sector is paying. We can't compete with the kind of starting salaries that are going to be paid to these folks. That's the first concern. And the second concern is, in all due respect to my brethren, attorneys, and the other folks in that system, ask yourself, are they really, really going to work harder in bus, but to get more cases through?
Just to catch us up.
Because there is some talk in the community that there's a lot of coasting going on and doing awful minimal work for the pay.
Lots.
Some folks and even in other counties view those positions as plain cushy attorney positions.
Yeah.
So if we give, if we give these raises, we need to look long and hard next year at the, at the man.
What was the paper you were giving them?
To see if it helped.
And I have the percentage of all this.
That was their case docket.
Case docket, that's what it was.
He had it from Judge Spitzer that showed that.
So I think docket.
So the cases that was being resolved compared to the cases that was just being brought in? So there were, they were, they had a performance, a formula, a percentage that was breaking down per each court, the ones that was getting through the cases faster than the others. And we had, we had some that was over 100%, so that meant that they were resolving more than they were bringing in. We have some courts that wasn't close to that, to them.
I think that's the data that we need to.
Very well taken.
And I ran into Evan Hammond Friday, and he showed me his paperwork. And he said, I said, what's the problem? And he, you know what he said the problem was? Postponement. He showed me papers, he's got 11 postponements, eight post, I mean, for stupid stuff that you shouldn't even take that much to, you know that.
I'm not accusing any one person of doing that, but in my business, we call that milking a file. You, you run it out as long as you can, and you settle it or plead it or something at the last minute. I mean, how many things are being tried, taken to the man?
Right.
You know, that's part of what causes us to have an over-the-top census of prisoners.
Jail, yeah.
So I'm just.
I checked, 90% were plea bargains. That was a year and a half ago.
Well, and, you know, I, next year, I'll look at that data, and even then, I'm going to look at it with a little bit of a jaded eye, because.
Right.
The data is coming from the folks that need for the data to look. The data is coming from the folks that need for the data to look at.
True. As I say, is it audit data or is it data that isn't... But I think we need to look at it like in a quarter, like in three to four months. I think we need to look at it and say, hey, let's, give us some input as to where we at, after he showed us that. I mean, our biggest takeaway, I thought, was, well, that's something we can measure, at least, let's, let's look at that.
My hope is that the higher salaries attract good, higher-quality people who are going to get in and work, and work their butts off to process these cases. I hope it's not the opposite, which is taking people out of private practice, where it's, it's tough, tough to make a living and getting into on easy street. I hope it's not that.
I didn't think about...
We need to keep an eye on it.
I, I didn't think about that. You bring up a very good point, that that salary gets to the point of it's competing against the private sector. I didn't think about it from, from that, from that viewpoint, but I mean, that's, that's a very valid...
Well, we just brought on a new associate, and this, I'm not telling anything out of school, because it's a matter of public record. He's a part-time deputy prosecutor now, so we're paying part of his salary, and the county's paying part of the salary. But for that, I don't know that we could have paid the kind of salary it would have taken to get somebody to come here to Marion, Indiana. Thankfully, his father is a surgeon in this county, and so people with connections to Grant County and Marion tend to have a higher desire to come back here. But it's getting tough.
Well, I think that's what I, what I was trying to tell them, you know? Everybody's short, man. But you gotta pick it up. And it's heck when you gotta pick it up, but you gotta pick it up so we're doing the right thing. And we're not, this, this overcrowding is just crazy.
And I did bring up the fact that, you know, if, if prosecutors, different prosecutors are getting a $20,000 raises, does that mean that they're going to be working any harder? I don't think so. I hope so. I don't think so, because typically it tends not to go that way. But I, but I also pressed upon the, come with a plan. How's this going to look different than what we've been doing in the past? And, and what are the goals? How are we going to measure those goals from year to year or quarter to quarter, however? I think that's important data that we need to have in front of us, so that we know this is working. You know, Mr. Hunt asked for an additional prosecutor, and that was part of what I'd asked him. I was like, how is that going to change things? He talked about how he was going to put two prosecutors in, in each one of the courts, and he would be able to go through the cases maybe a little bit faster with, with the additional prosecutor. So in my mind, I'm thinking to myself, are we better off with another position, to have another deputy prosecutor in there, as opposed to just giving a $20,000 increase, just to, just to give one?
Yeah, he's, he made an argument that the reason for two was, is if, if one gets postponed at checkpoint, then the other person should have that other one ready to go. And he's, a lot of times, the problem I'm having is, because they don't have experience. He goes, if we don't have this one and it gets postponed, we're not ready for the second one, so then it looks bad on our side of it.
We're in a tough position.
It is.
I mean, I'm, you know, because of what I do, I may have a little bit more insight, but I'm not, I'm not a public defender, I'm not a prosecutor, and I'm not a judge. So it's tough even for me to say. I want to have faith that the folks that are in that system are working hard. We need people that are putting in the hours, not cutting out early. I mean, every, everybody in the whole judicial law enforcement system has got, got to work, got to get in and work. Kind of hours I do in the private sector, that's what it's going to take.
Well, I just keep looking at the public defenders, you know? Like, how big a raise did you get in last year? About 28,000? Something like that? And...
It was big one.
And that's all we heard, was public defender prosecutor from the judges. And of course, from the, in the area, it's the judges, you know what I'm saying?
And again, I will go by the record, because these are the folks I have to work with.
I know, but I would say...
I am not saying they're not...
If I got a 28,000 dollar raise, I'd, I'd be stepping my game up a little bit.
I, I think we have a great judiciary. I hope they're listening, the judges, and, and I think they do a good job. I just, I hope and pray they're paying more, that we're getting more paid.
Well, and I think if you just step it up enough and get it cleared out, then you can kick it back down, you know what I'm saying? We just got to kick it up and take care of the problem.
Crime rising is part of it.
Yeah.
Not having a big enough jail is probably part of it. And the system, the players that are getting these cases too, it's all part of it. Oh, it's multifactorial.
Mr. Meeksley is running for judge. He gives some comments regarding the judicial system that I think kind of flies in the face of what you're talking about here a little bit, because he would say there are some decisions being made to continue cases that shouldn't be made. Judges have to step up and not do that. The prosecutors need to make sure the evidence is available to the public defenders and so forth. And the public defenders need to stop going through all these continuations that they get.
Well, yeah.
That's everybody doing this. Giving them more money isn't going to make that stop.
Well, even like when me and James over there, we was looking at, he was asking Bruce about, how come you guys don't use that TV so much? You know what I mean? He said, "Well, that belongs to the public defenders. We don't want, no worries." And we were like, "Why not? It's that county property." You know what I'm saying? I mean, what, if you could get them through there faster, you wouldn't have to take them out of that jail. It seems like a win-win.
Yeah, it's like, everybody needs to step it up. And I, obviously, you want to pay a salary to those positions that is worthy of what they do. I'm not arguing that at all. But you don't want to reward them for poor performance either.
Right.
And sometimes, there's a little bit of a flavor that we're rewarding those guys, giving them more people, giving them more money, or is it because they haven't done a good job to get where they are already?
Jim, you mentioned the information being audited. Do you know if, is there any service that would audit that kind of information to see if we're getting banged for the fact?
I mean, the public, the public accounts in the area might do something like that. It would cost something to have that done, but...
We spend an awful lot of money for outside consultants to come in and look at things, but this might be one.
But that, that is a part of the problem. I mean, obviously, the data you get comes from the source, and obviously, you hope it's correct.
Yes.
But the people doing it are the ones getting impacted by what you're going to do as well, so it's not independent, I guess, I don't want to say. But it was a good point there, I thought.
And I think, and I think looking at it, you know, and again, the sheriff's request, and hopefully, that the out-of-county inmate placement would go down because of three things, because of what you just spoke about with Judge Meeks and the comments that he's made, and the direction that I feel that he's going to go. If we do grant an additional deputy prosecutor, not necessarily the raises, but the additional deputy prosecutor, and then if we do go with the chief deputy position, that's going to go from a part-time to a full-time position. So hopefully, between those three things, that will alleviate some of those outside, outside placements that's taking place.
Well, you know, every time I talk to him, Mike, he always tells me that he don't have enough seasoned, right? Scott, he don't have enough seasoned, right? So I asked him how many he had, and he said he had four new and three seasoned. I could, I hate to think that you had three seasoned people, they couldn't teach two of those four people, you know what I'm saying?
I know, in our conversations, he made that same comment, that he only has three, and he feels like that the pay, if, if we could get the pay to what he requested, he could maybe try to recruit another seasoned employee.
Well, I think next year, when Judge Spitzer comes in and gives us the state of the judiciary, we need to remember to ask him, is it working? Is paying these folks more working? And what are the metrics that you can, you can point to to show that it's working?
I think we need to get the, if we approve anything, we need to get the metrics, that way they're filed on file from the judge, right? And then next year, when the body looks at the raises, be like, okay, these are the metrics, you know, and see, see where you're at.
I agree 100%. I like to see the metrics before approving even this, to know what we're going into for 2025, that we have something measurable right in front of us, and we know the direction that we're, that we're going into. I think it'll make me feel a little bit better with these decisions that we're, that we're making. At least we have a plan in place. If the plan's not working, we have, we have, we have, you know, a way to measure that and know if it is working or not, and then we make another change if, if we have to. But at least, let's have a plan moving forward, as opposed to just staying with the status quo. All right, we know what the status quo is getting us. It's, it's time to get outside the box a little bit and come up with something new.
I think we gotta just remember, we all got one goal. We gotta be a team, everybody, so we can fix this, bring this county back where it's supposed to be. It's got to take everybody. If you can't have resistance, we all got to go, okay, we made mistakes, no fault. That's, what do we do to fix it?
Amen.
Even the, even when your vouches, the public defenders, prosecutors, we're still behind the state average, right? I know you had that data, I don't know.
That was the comparison with Boone County, which they took away, that's a comparable county.
Which I believe they was all like eight at 110?
They had 13 at 110, or they had 10 at 113,000. That, that was Boone County. They have, a couple of the counties, the public defenders aren't even part of their salary ordinance. They are strictly paid through contractual services, and that's not through payroll. So I have no idea what they're paying.
But that'll, this'll get us pretty far, right? For what, is that a pretty far as to pay us?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. That depends on what those counties decide to give for their 25 raises too, so. But it would bring them much closer to a 24 salary, yes.
The county's always been behind when you compare, we used to have a block of 10 counties we were kind of in the mix with. We were always eight or nine of the 10 of those 10. And I'm not sure what this percentage is going to get in the average range, I suppose, kind of thing.
Yeah.
And obviously, one of the goals of this body is to pay your employees reasonably. I mean, that's one of the, and it's a good goal to have. And hopefully, in some of these changes you've made, the last couple of years, you've done a technical job of trying to bump things up. So I mean, you already started that path, I think. And right now, you're in a great financial position when it comes to operating balance. My concern is, can you sustain it over a long period of time? I'm not saying you can't, but that's, that's a concern, how, why do you make those kind of decisions? And we don't know what the funding future's going to be. Is the state going to change our tax system in some way that's going to make it even more difficult?
Is our population going to keep decreasing?
So far, it has been, and we don't know that, obviously, that you don't have a crystal ball. That's why I'm saying, you do these kind of things, I'll say at this magnitude, because to me, that's a big raise. I mean, you've already given a big one, so this is going to be another big one. You do that with that thought in mind, you know, that we want to do it for our people, but you got to make sure you feel like you can sustain it, most likely. If you, it's always tough to bring it back once you've given it, kind of thing, so. Not saying you can't, but you got to be thinking about those as you make that call.
I was in a meeting a few days ago, and I haven't been able to verify this stat yet, but it was, it was told to us that Grant County is now the poorest county in the state of Indiana.
Per capita, income?
We, we've taken that mantle now.
We're frittled.
Well, we used to, and I told us, since I've been seeing the data, back when I was on the council, I already saw this, so. We actually, on spending per capita, we were like six from the bottom. We did a good job of spending tax dollars, and that may have changed in the years since I've seen that, but we were really, I'll say low, when it came to spending per capita. But obviously, income per capita makes a difference too.
I remember that stat. It has been a long while since I've...
It's been a while since I've seen that, since I've looked at it, yeah.
You're right.
We were like six from the bottom as far as spending. So we did a great job of spending taxpayer money, because we didn't have that much to spend. I mean, obviously, right now, you're in a better shape, you've got some dollars to spend, but you just got to make sure you do it wisely, knowing that salaries, you know, it's not, that's not an asset you're getting, that's a cost. And you got to make sure you can sustain that over time, if you're going to put it out there.
Was that AIC? Do you remember?
It would have been the Department of Public Defense, they had some of their data that would have shown that, there was reports that they compiled that would show spending per capita.
It might be on Gateway.
It's possible, on Gateway, it could be. I would think they would still do that kind of reporting. I haven't seen it for a long time, but I would think that'd still be out there. Now, just get it there. I just know, that's one of your goals, and you guys have done a good job of trying to increase people's status as far as they go, the last two or three years. You're, you're talking about continuing that, and it's in big chunks. I mean, you're talking 5,000 raises, that may have been unheard of a few years ago. I mean, 1,000 is all we used to shoot for, you know? You're talking five of those, five years of raises, kind of thing, so.
Can we make 2%?
Yeah.
I hear you.
Shane, do you think that the detention center needs to have something in the budget?
I think we need to leave it in there, put it back in. Do we know, Angie, did you calculate the raises for the detention center?
I...
Or you put them at the last?
Well, I put them in as the sheriff's department. So what the sheriff's department is currently making in a jailer position is what I put in the detention center. There was no longevity, because of the air we do, we're...
And I think we got to leave it in, even though we may be, you know, in your way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Obviously, it's not spent, it's going to go back to the general fund.
How much?
So, to date, they have spent 337,040 for out-of-county inmate housing, out of 750,000.
Okay, 338,000, over what period of time have they spent then?
That is, they began doing this in May.
We got, so May, June, July, August, is that?
September.
Yeah, September is five months they've done that? That averages to 67,006 roughly per month, 67,060. Times 12 would be 811,000.
And I had suggested to Shane, maybe half of the 1,600,000 or a million.
Yeah, which I think a million would be more than enough at the 68 and a half, and then that gives him a...
Oh, he's still got 400,000.
That's for this year, though.
That's for this year.
That'll end.
That's going to end, yeah, that's going to end December 31st.
So we have, what, October, November, December, so three months, 180,000.
You've got more than enough at the rate that's being spent at this point.
He did make the comment at the last council meeting that he was getting ready to move more. I don't remember the number he said, though.
Oh, yeah.
Well, one of the goals, and Shane, you mentioned this in the conversation, that you guys have to be aware of as far as how much capacity they want to have in there, and the rest are going to be shipped out. So you got to be aware of that as well. That enters into this decision, is that a good thing or not?
Yeah, because I think the last time I checked, yesterday, before, we had 300 in there, plus, but we had, he said, 80 out, shipped out.
So was that 380? If he wants to have like a, what, 80% capacity or something like that, that changes that a lot, too.
Yeah. Which, they said, nobody ever heard of that.
No, there's, there's no way.
That adds that number up a lot of...
We're staffing for at least 280. An 80% capacity is going to take us down to 220, so. That's 60 inmates that should be here. That's now we're shipping off to another county and paying 40 dollars a day for.
I just don't want the mindset to be, which I feel like it has been, that if we budget the 1.6 million, that he's going to spend, you know, every dollar. If we budget a million, we're saying that we'll all agree to the 68 and a half for the year.
The problem you have with that is if, and you don't know this, obviously, but legitimately, you need more than that, and are you going to say no at that point? I don't know.
So what was, what would the average be at 12 months? 800,000?
811,200, I think it was.
Why would we use 811,200?
That's, that's, when it's been used May through September, the cost that it's been, if you take that on average and project that for 12 months, 811,200. I don't know if it started out slow, and it's gotten bigger.
If we have to, we can additional, per create.
Right.
Yeah, I'm saying five, I agree with Mike, 500,000. They need more than come back. They already still got some more.
Well, remember, that ends, at the end of December, this is, you're talking new money beginning January 1st. So if you go 500,000, based on what's being done currently, that's not enough. And so, well, your goal is to do a reasonable budget. And so, well, your goal is to do a reasonable budget, you want to have a reasonable budget.
If we do that, 811?
Currently, 811 is what you're.
Is that reasonable?
Well, based on what they're doing now, as long as you're okay with what they're doing now, that's reasonable.
So, or Grant, you think it should be the million?
What's that?
You think it should be the million?
Well, I'm not going to say it's a million, I'd be more than a million than 500,000, 500,000 is too low.
I'd propose 900,000.
Unless you're, unless you're going to say, hey, you can't go any more than what this is going to let you do.
How about 750 in between where both are?
I'll go 800, I won't go up anymore. We've got something in that ballpark.
Whatever you want to feel like it's a reasonable amount for you for the years, which you want to kind of have in mind. Now, if you feel like it's going to be abused, maybe you go low, know you're going to bump it up in some way.
I don't think, I, I, no way, shape, or form would accuse the sheriff of abusing that. I mean, I think we're kind of stuck with having to do that.
I understand, but I'm just saying, that's how, that's really what we're talking about here a little bit, is do we really need that or not?
I think if we set it like 750, 800,000, we're, we're bringing accountability.
We got a good argument for why. We just did the math, and that's the math. I mean, to me, that makes.
Yeah, the current usage rate is 811,000 a year.
And we still want the prosecutor, probably defenders, who will get along.
It keeps coming back to that, you get people convicted or what, or acquitted. They either go to DOC or they get out of our hotel.
Or they stay here for the rest of their term, yeah, their term is, at that point, identify how long it's going to be.
Well, that's because DOC is not accepting prisoners like they should.
It's really going to be on you guys, because you got to number out the council. It's, hey, you guys want to?
Hey, hey.
Over the head.
So 999,9?
I heard 750. Are we to the point, or also that we need to, we're only going to?
We need this for the budget, though, right, to get past, right?
Yeah, you have to make some decisions for the 25 budget, what you're going to do with that.
We're to the point that we need to say, we're only going to pay for this many inmates to be shipped out of county per month.
I'm not sure you can say that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, you can want to say that, I understand the thought of wanting to, but can you really say that?
But you know, this wasn't nothing new. We never had shipped inmates out of county before until now.
The reason, the reason I say that is, by the sheriff, I got, let's say legitimately, I have to ship out more than you give me money for. Either we're going to have an overcrowding war, or I got to ship them out, and so, I don't know, they should have been shipped out, they're going to be here staying.
And never forget.
That opens your door to more issues and problems and public street names, purse strings, federal lawsuits.
Well, I was going to say, never forget what the ramifications are of overcrowding. A federal judge building your jail for you. And you talk about expensive.
Remember, it comes back to that, what's reasonable? What is, based on what we're, what our operation would be, what is a reasonable amount?
And because all we can do is open and close purse strings, I think we just set a figure somewhere like we're talking about. So at least the sheriff has to come back and report in when he needs more money, explaining why, what's going on.
That way we'll know, too, if it's moving, people moving out, getting less, or getting more.
Have you, if you had, one of the things you guys could ask is, I'm not sure, it depends on the case, obviously, but one thing that maybe have in mind is, what is the average length of stay for inmates? And they have them calculate that for you, you give you an update, every, every quarter, whatever, what are you, how many, what's the average day?
Are we allowed to ask that as a council?
Why not?
Yeah, we've had that number before.
We used to get a jail report that showed you MHR, but I'm talking about how many per day, what's the average stay?
I think we're not only allowed to ask, but I think we have a sheriff who will gladly answer that question.
We basically, we've asked it a couple times.
Yeah, we, I mean, we know we've got people over there for five years, four years, three years.
And another part of that is, how long, what's their stay before their trial is, before their case is decided, before it's adjudicated? How long are they here before that's?
In DOC, not taking anybody unless they're above a level six count.
Level six stay here, for the most part. There may be a few exceptions, for the most part, level six.
So, you know, if folks get convicted of level six or low, lower offenses, we don't have a choice but to keep them in a county jail, either ours or somebody else's.
And I agree, but you can still ask those numbers, before, before that case, does he say how long are they here? Before it's decided, is that going down or?
How long is it taking your case to get through the system?
Well, I think the other question needs to be asked is how many continuances are being granted?
Of course, that's on the sheriff's, that's the court's.
If you're looking at 11 continuances, on this charge, ain't no way, they, somebody should have been able to go, okay, so, you know what I'm saying?
Well, hopefully, you know.
And the guy was still in jail.
So what's the amount you want to use?
I'll concede a 750, but I would rather have 500, but. I'll go along with Mr. Connor and be, be somewhere in the middle.
I'm already married, I'm not married today, does it? I think if that's a motion, I'll second that.
I'll make a motion that we put 750,000 in the sheriff's county inmate.
So I have a motion for Mr. Scott, a second for Mr. Connor to approve within the sheriff's department budget for out-of-county inmates, 750,000. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call.
Scott?
Hi.
Connor? All right. Hicks?
Yes.
Poling?
Yes.
Lemming?
All right.
Middleworth?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number two under the sheriff, I think, I think we should just leave that in the budget, detention center. If there's no action, then it'll just stay in the budget, correct?
Correct.
Move on to the health. Move staff from the 1159 to the 1161 with two additional new positions, and 1161 is requested. Do we allow that to happen? Do you want to refresh us, Angie, or?
Sheriff.
Ter, why don't you refresh us?
So they're hiring two more people?
That's out of the state, right, out of the 1161, which is the state funds that we will see.
So that's six people you hired out of that money, correct?
I don't know.
Why do you know that?
I wasn't prepared for that question.
What was your question?
It, that would be six people altogether.
Oh, you hired out that, you're talking about the new grant, right?
Well, the new state funding, it's not a grant.
You hired 40, you're right.
I hired three.
They hired environmentalists, a nurse, a school lady, and one of the other.
It's on.
You know, I tell me that.
I thought we were the biggest part of that one.
I just wanted to know how many people's about on the string.
So, I'm shifting several people over, it's not a grant, they keep telling me it's not a grant. The reason for shifting, the county match was lowered dramatically, and the state funding was raised. And of the state funding, which, I can tell you how much that was, 60% of it has to be spent on preventative. Only 40 can be spent on what's considered enforcement. So I felt like shifting all of the nurses over there and all of their salaries would, would make it easier for me to meet that 60% requirement, because they're all considered pregnant. So that was the reason for the decision, of who I shifted and why I shifted.
We approve the peer support?
You are correct.
The community partnership?
Um, yes.
Right?
Yep.
So we just need a motion to allow this to happen, and allow 1161 to the two additional positions, which are the food safety inspector and then the new health educator nurse.
I think it's kind of a two-part thing, is that the first part was switching from 1159 to 1161, and the second part is adding the two description places.
I think we made it clear that nine, if this funding was to be dissolved at those positions, you go back to.
And you're going to exclude all the positions I originally had back to the county.
Yeah, yeah, that would be the thought.
We paid for it all once, but they go, they go.
And all of the programs that they create will have to go with them, yes.
We just make you guys do more, play your program.
Still pretty busy.
Remember, we just talked about picking the.
You're still pretty busy.
She's been ghosting too much.
And on the solid nature, Harrison, Ruchik, that was in your budget, but it does show which positions.
I mean, if I.
Move from 1159 to 1161, that'll go back if this is ever dropped.
I just kind of remember it from what we talked about.
Everything organized, it goes faster. I'm giving a trigger, that's like, Mike got it on 90% right.
Is there any other discussion, I'd entertain a motion. Motion would be to move the staff from 1159 to 1161 and create the two additional new positions in 1161, which would be the food safety inspection officer and the nurse, health educator.
Zero effect to the general fund.
I believe so.
Actually, it's helping the general fund because positions really do matter to us.
I'd second. Who made the motion, Angie?
Chuck.
Chuck made the motion?
Yeah. I was just asking you a question.
I have a motion for Mr. Poling, a second for Mr. Lemming to approve within the health department to move the staff from 1159 to 1161 and create the two new additional positions in 1161. One being the health safety inspector, inspection officer, and the other being the nurse, health educator. I believe the request for the food safety positions at the 45,236, and the health educator would be at the 51,036.
It would be a nurse.
Nurse, okay, yes. Sorry. Are there any other questions or comments? Public input? Roll call, please.
Poling?
Yes.
Lemming?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Middleworth?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. You have everything you need for that? Yeah, okay.
I, I would like to say, though, that the 45,236 is the same as the environmental specialist. If, if the $5,000 increase is allowed, would I increase that position to match the other positions that are comparable?
Would the funding support that?
You can't, with a new person that don't know nothing, you can't give them.
It, she doesn't have.
You're going to raise the same amount as Jeff, right?
She doesn't, not Jeff, Jeff Hoppers, former dealer.
I would think that you would give the raises to the whole department, whatever the raise would be, it would be to the whole department. Or whatever the number is, or percent.
Or, yeah, what.
Whatever ends up being.
But that grant still supports.
It, it will.
Okay.
I, I just, yeah, you have to, so, I could re-sign the grant, it'll be. Yeah, we, I have to, they keep telling us it's not a grant, I have to keep reminding them it's not a grant, it's just today's under the funding.
Sounds like a grant.
Looks like one, smells like one.
There, here's one.
Okay, it's not a grant.
Well, we'll move on to the next items that we need to revisit. The recommendation for the health, within the commissioner's fund, the health fund, the 5200. We'll go ahead and fund it at the 17,500 for the health insurance. We believe that's a good number to get us to the 7 million, roughly.
And actually, the budget's 7.3, and this way, it doesn't impact that, that brings it $6 million as the revenue piece, instead of 5.7, it's 6, 6 million.
And then the 230 for life.
That stays the same.
Is there a motion for that?
Some move?
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott, a second for Mr. Poling to approve within the health fund, 5200, and we're going to fund at the 17,500 for the health insurance and $230 for the life insurance. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Scott?
Hi.
Poling?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Lemming?
All right.
Middleworth?
Yes.
Just one thought, I didn't say the public, I'm just one thought, revenue's 6 million, potential expense 7.3. So obviously, it's a negative 1.3 million that you're exposing yourself to. If everything came in exactly as expense, or went out as expense and came in as revenue, so, but you have a large cash balance to absorb that. So it's not a problem, but I wouldn't expect it to go that far either.
I appreciate that. Have you, have you ever figured the stop loss, what actually it can ever get to?
I, well, I heard, I got the number, because I asked Angie, she got the number for me, and the number she got me, wow, that's too low. Because we already spent more than that, but what we spend includes the insurance and all that stuff, too, so the stop loss for claims is like 5.3 million, 5.5 million, something like that.
So we'd be close then?
So, you know, that doesn't include what we pay out in insurance and other things, too, to add to that potential 7 million, but I would think we're okay with that, okay? I don't see any reason for '25 to have anything to worry about. Obviously, reevaluate next year to see what happens for '26, but based on how things have gone, we've been really in good shape. Now, I can't guarantee I got a bad claim year somewhere, I mean, who knows, but, but I still think that amount lets you absorb even a rough year when it comes to claims.
Thank you.
You can feel good about that, at least it sure looks like it. Just don't kill me with nothing, but, yeah, it should be good.
Remember, August, October, the second, that's 7, I'm saying, Jim said.
Catastrophic things happen, but boy, it has to be a big one.
Okay, we'll move on to item two. I mentioned during budget evening to create a new maintenance department called Buildings and Grounds, which would be number 0313, and appropriate $25,000 in a preventative maintenance account. I think, we, we done a.
We currently have a jail maintenance department, and there's a $25,000 appropriation in there for jail maintenance, I believe it is what it was.
Correct, yeah.
And, and zero that out and fit it into this department.
The idea was if you gave them their own department, and they could have some funds and some accountability, that they could go out and do some of this preventative maintenance stuff that we're seeing.
Right.
And, you know, there'd be, okay, hey, we got the funds. It would, in a sense, kind of be like what we done for IT or central dispatch recently, we created their department within county, correct?
Yes. There's also a salary portion of the maintenance department that is paid out of here. I would love if you guys would allow it to be moved to the commissioner's budget. It's so that it's not separated out like that, I don't know why it was ever done that way.
So should we, should we move the maintenance employees to this budget, instead of having them in the commissioners?
We could very well.
Why would we do that?
You could create a salary line, I don't have that amount right here available to.
Yeah.
Give, but I could have it for the next meeting.
They can approve it this way, if they wanted to, you can still have it for a budget approval, yeah.
Yeah, I think we create the buildings and grounds, and go ahead and just put the maintenance salary piece in buildings and grounds, and then go ahead and eliminate the preventative maintenance supplementing their salary, and just have it all paid out of buildings and grounds. I think that makes it a little cleaner in a way to track it, and in a sense, it's creating an identity for maintenance, in my eyes.
It's 25,000 or not?
I think that was what was in the jail maintenance.
They'll move more, they got to the salaries and stuff, they'll probably be moving more up to that.
Yeah, they need to grab all your start, and so we leave that much in there, if they got to come to you, they can come and get some.
So, right, there'll be more than 25,000 actually put into, because you have salary amounts.
Yeah, the 25,000 is just the appropriation for preventative maintenance.
Right.
The salary portion would be separate, but yes, I get what you're saying, is $25,000 enough?
Right, because, I mean, the jail is.
For the non-salary piece, you mean?
For the non-salary piece, because obviously, this building, the courthouse, anywhere else, you know, over here, there's, there's more to cover than.
Yeah, obviously, we didn't go through the details and break out of the commissioner's budget all maintenance items, but probably at some point.
Yeah, you could later on, when you look at that closer, pull out the commission piece that's been in there. It's just to make sure you don't have any tools that gets spent, but.
Give them a reason to do some stuff.
Is this number two and three together, you're actually doing two and three together, it sounds like, is that right?
Yes.
That's what I'm thinking, that's yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Poling, a second for Mr. Scott to create the department, the maintenance department called Buildings and Grounds, and appropriate 25,000 into preventative maintenance account, zero out the appropriations in the jail department, which is 0380, zero out the 25,000 for repairs of equipment, which is now in the new maintenance department, and zero out the salary portions and move them to the, from the commissioner's salary account.
Actually, you just changed it, you want to move this second, because that's going to go to the jail or this.
Yeah.
What's it called, Buildings and Grounds Department?
Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Poling?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Lemming?
Hi.
Middleworth?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move on to the circuit court, and the request was to increase the per being to 80,000 as requested. Angie, do you have any? We, we discussed, I believe that was a good number.
That is what Mark had, Judge Bitzer had requested for their juries and stuff, so.
What was it?
Eight, what was it?
Off the top of my head, that is 70.
This year, the budget was 52,000, but as of 531, they had already spent 45,000. So, and I do believe they have come in for.
So, and I do believe they have come in for additional appropriation since then, so...
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve the increase in the per diem at $80,000 as requested by the Circuit Court.
Yeah, that's all courts combined to that, right?
I believe so.
They do all the courts do that one account.
Yes.
Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Lemming?
Aye.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Pauling?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries.
This looks used to be much longer. Appreciate it.
We worked harder. The EMA request, they request to allow full-time Deputy Director and a part-time Operations Chief. I'll be honest, I do not remember the request.
How's a person working part-time now?
He has two part-times now.
He wants to move one of those to full-time.
That's correct. And I know that... Just eliminate one part-time.
One part-time, one full-time, one part-time.
And I know there have been discussions about utilizing the preparedness grant money to cover a portion of that salary. And if I understood here correctly, to do that, they would, that position, that new position, would have to allot 10 hours a week to the preparedness grant work. Correct? Because we can't do that... Right, but they're supposed to be considered a part-time Health Department employee.
So is that doable, then? I mean, Bob...
Is there a way for them to be part EMS, part Health Department, EMA? So, how does the State Preparedness Department about this? They aren't thrilled with the idea because if we have an emergency, your EMA is going to be hyper-focused on an emergency. And if there's any public health involved in this emergency, then the EMA employee is going to be pulled towards the EMA portion, not the public health portion. So they don't like the idea. They said there's nothing in writing that says we can't do it. That they, only one other county in the state does it, and when tornadoes went through, it created a problem for them.
Which we was doing it that way before, though, right?
No, she was having her Health Department, not EMA. She was stayed located over there, but she was on Health Department staff. She was paid through the Health Department.
All right, come on, Amanda.
Mm-hmm.
Well...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, sort of.
She was on my payroll.
But she was also on Bob's, too.
Mm-hmm.
So it was a split.
But we were using preparedness grant one day?
Yes, that was when there was three part-time people doing preparedness. It's gotten too big. I can't. There are these classes now that whoever, we have to have one dedicated Preparedness Coordinator and then one designated Health Department backup. Who, I mean, our backup's gonna have to go to a two-day class. I just can't handle it anymore. So we have, Dean is actually gonna be the backup, but...
So who's our Preparedness Coordinator now?
Right now, it's Bruce. Bender.
From my conversations was that Bob Jackson, the Director, mostly has all the information. He goes to the same trainees. The thought was, if he was wanting that new, full-time position, why couldn't that person do the role that, you know, that Bruce is doing right? Because I believe that way, I mean, it was kind of done before, in a sense. And so that would give the, you know, it would offset the salary some, somewhat.
And then we need that salary, right? Because you don't want to take it out of that because of what she just said, right?
Yeah, for what she's saying right now, we were gonna eat the, we're gonna eat the full amount or whatever.
That was $48.
I'm not saying you can't do that. I'm saying it would be complicated.
Well, yeah, but we don't want to do that because if we done that somewhere else... Part of the EMA salaries are reimbursable, correct?
Yes.
And I'm trying to remember from the presentation.
I don't remember, I don't know if that's a percentage, but I do know it's this year and next year, we don't receive $30,000 reimbursement for that.
I think it's a flat amount.
And Bob said that this new position would be reimbursable as well, correct? Yeah, I remember. I don't know.
I don't think it would be.
I think you have a max amount that you can see.
Yeah, I think it's this flat dollar amount.
No matter how many you have.
Right. Because I just gave Amanda all of last year or this year's information, so it's just a problem with that reimbursement. And I had to give all three employees the information for salaries.
So are you saying the majority of the counties in Indiana Preparedness Coordinator gets through the Health Department?
Does the separate employees in the Health Department get it?
Well, Angie, here it says part-time Operations Chief. So then one of the part-time would be EMA?
They currently have a part-time Admin Assistant. They have a part-time Deputy Director. You would do away with both of those part-time titles and create the new part-time as the Operations Chief. And that would be their one and only part-time.
Yeah.
And their full-time would be a Deputy Director.
Let's put it back, right?
You want to see it?
There you go.
Actually, it is right here in your packet. I do have a plan out for everyone. I just forgot.
It just, to me, it was more powerful if you could get the, do the, like, I could do the grant work in the Health Department.
It would be...
You know? And if, then if they're already doing similar meetings, they're gonna, you know...
Almost two-fold.
But I could understand if they have an event, you know, what, where you're gonna focus.
Right.
But...
But does it sound like there needs to be further discussion about this before we make a decision?
No, I could make a decision. You could leave it at the 24 salaries so that I can run the numbers for the finalization of the budget and then make your decision. And adopt the salary ordinance. Same thing with the raises. You can leave everything at the 24 levels.
It should be nice to decide something tonight. It's not gonna make the decision any easier.
It's, it's gonna be harder to try to come up with a final number for the 16th if I don't have...
Yeah.
Guidance where you want me to go.
Yeah, I get that.
I mean, I do think that the Director within the EMA is thinking, you know, long-term, he needs to train somebody, right? To be a Director, you know, succession plan, so to speak. So, I mean, I see the benefit of that. I just was hoping maybe we could offset some of the costs a little bit. Which would be a difference of what...
As the number of hours and the need, call for more hours in the position, is that happening? You know, did he, I guess, defend that or describe that when he was presenting? Because he's got a, the reason I say that, he can train his part-time Deputy Director to be the, you know, the full-time Director at some point, but maybe there's, maybe the need has increased as far as hours. I don't know.
Yeah. The difference in the budget was the $31,700. Right?
From part-time.
From Roy was requested till '24.
I see, because he's requesting 48, he's getting 21, or I guess 14.5, right?
And then if you took the $25,000 grant to offset the cost even more, you're just getting that palatable range.
$33,450 right now.
I would also say the last 4B that I did does include the request as presented.
Some move.
Just how you said it.
Full-time, part-time.
Just like the...
Just like it is.
So create the full-time position at $48,000 and part-time Operations Chief at $25 per hour? And that's your...
Is there a second? Second. I have a motion from Mr. Pauling, a second from Mr. Hicks to approve the request for the Emergency Management Agency budget request to have a full-time Deputy Director in the amount of $48,000 to create a new part-time Operations Chief at the $25 per hour, up to $14,000, and eliminate the part-time Admin Assistant and part-time Deputy Director positions. Just as requested by the Director. Are there any other questions or comments? Public input? Roll call, please.
Pauling?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Connor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Aye, lassie.
Lemming?
Aye.
Middlesworth?
Yes.
I was just gonna tell it to you, but...
Excuse me, that should have been aye, lassie. In my pronoun, girl.
With the expectation of doing more work. So now we're circling back to the top. So I'll just read the requests again, just maybe it could be... Is there any, before we do, is there anything else you'd like to see as far as percents versus dollar amount?
I think if we, if we do this $5,000, at least with that 40 hours, like you said, with, you know, paid lunch, shaped it for...
You probably can't do the paid lunch and 40-hour stuff down here on your own, I don't think.
Yeah, that's the Commissioners.
That'd be something if it's made clear. It'd be a dual role between Commissioners and you guys at some point.
The other...
My assumption was that was always worked that way anyway. Paid lunch, 40 hours, 30 hours.
Hasn't been for ever.
I don't remember it ever being anything other than...
I was thinking it's 37 and a half, because it's hour plus, 35, actually, not 37 and a half, 35.
I feel, I feel confident with our conversation with Scott and the Matrix. I think we go ahead and review his request. Mr. Hunt's request. You know, as he presented his budget. And we're still, I think we're still at or below a state average.
Oh, yeah.
Now, you say not only state average, or average of the counties that are similar.
Yes.
Right?
Comparable counties.
Yeah, yeah, not state average. That's different.
Well, shouldn't you do the state average instead of county?
Don't you want to get into that?
He looked away. He said, eh...
That's right.
There's some big counties out there, Joe.
I don't think there were, Mr....
Can compare ourselves to Hamilton County. You do that, maybe you're gonna be paying it.
Do that, I'll apply for one of those jobs again.
Today, right?
Mike's comment just resonates with me. I never really thought about it from that standpoint. What it's gonna do to private attorneys. I mean, a $5,000 increase, even for a Deputy Prosecutor, is still pretty good. Pretty good chunk, and he is getting a new position out of it as well.
The private practice, you know, they've increased their rates, I'm sure, to be, you know...
Yeah, but it's...
I mean, I seen, I mean, I seen what we're paying. One of the attorneys is $300 an hour.
Well, and I'll tell you, my firm's in a better position to do that. Where it's really gonna hurt is smaller firms and sole practitioners. I mean, and I won't get into the detail. It's not my ox being gored as much as it is others.
I understand.
I don't have a problem getting to that point. I just...
I guess I'd rather face it. But how much time do you have?
We don't have much. We're overcrowded now. I mean, we gotta do something, but I might mind, you know? We gotta give it to them, and we should tell them what we expect, that, you know, we need to work it.
And have the courage that if, if things don't get better, it's going down.
Right.
I know that's unprecedented, but you gotta light a fire under people sometimes. And, I mean, I'm more than willing to pay good wages for hard work. That's fair.
That's fair.
Right.
That's gonna take the prosecutor to demand that from the deputies.
Right. All the same to do. And I'm, I have a little bit of experience in this. I tried to be a Deputy Prosecutor for six weeks. The result was a heart attack, and I quit. I'm sorry, public agenda. So I wasn't gonna stay in it and milk it. Nothing I had. I'm just saying that would get a temptation. I got out because I couldn't do the job. I have two speeds on and off. And that's what we're...
I make a motion to pass the prosecutors, the class that we presented it.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Pauling, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve the prosecutor's budget as he requested. Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input?
Just to make sure that entire number two is what is, what is being motioned or being approved at that point? Number two on the list?
Yes.
Okay, so that includes the $5,000 increase except for heat and all that kind of stuff?
No.
No.
No, just the, just the prosecutor's budget.
Okay, so just the first part of that?
Right, just the first part. The second part is all...
Okay, give the prosecutor what he requested, period, is what we're talking about.
Yes.
All right, because I'm just looking at what the sheet says, I want to make sure we're on the same page.
Any other questions or comments? A roll call, please.
Pauling?
Yes.
Lemming?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Connor?
No.
Hicks?
Yes.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries.
Feel good about that one?
Well, we're going to implement the matrix, we're going to come back and view our... Matrix. Metrics.
Matrix is scaling the range, which is a great thing, I want that too.
I want to go.
Let the numbers come.
Metrics, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to see in comparison with other counties, or like Andrew Dunn, a great comparison?
I do too, appreciate it.
I don't want to ask her to do anymore. The time that the staff put in for all this, it's quite time for us to begin that whole... If you could find five more counties out, I'm just...
They're on that list, I got their salary orders, as I can do that.
Did she get overtime for doing that?
I don't think so.
That's right. She'd be happy to do.
It was a can of worms.
Well, could we do the, what's your thoughts on the longevity for the highway and the sheriff's department? We could go ahead and...
I did the longevity increase for central dispatch also.
And central dispatch.
So anyone that receives longevity increase to the twenty-three dollars.
And that, we'd have to open the contract back up and get the union to approve that, if they, right?
I'm not sure about the longevity portion.
If longevity is in the contract, I think you'd have to... I mean, obviously giving them something that will hassle, they'd like that, I think, does that open it up to other things? I don't know.
I don't think it does, because I think we've done it before that way.
I'm not sure.
Just a little motion that...
Saying we have, because I don't remember us ever doing that.
We did it when we did the twenty-one, or was that part of the contract?
I thought that was part of the...
No, we extended it.
It might have been.
I, we might want to make sure, from an attorney's standpoint, you're okay doing that, you might want to make sure of that.
That's a question Phil would always answer, so I think we turn that question over to Mr. Cook, Phil.
I would recommend you do that, just to make sure, be safe.
Didn't we last year, didn't that longevity come into effect there when we was...
Last time.
Because when we were doing the, with the union meeting, the union over there?
They asked for it, yes.
Yeah.
Because you could, if it becomes a question, having to open up the whole contract, you don't want to do that.
Right.
You might want to say, hey, keep in mind, next year we'll make sure we bump it. And take care of, you know, the next time it's open, kind of thing, is it open next year?
They're talking now, I believe.
They're talking as far as they're negotiating that?
No.
They're just discussing.
Not negotiating this year. None this year.
That's what I thought, so unless the attorney says you can do that without opening it up, you might want to, yeah, I want to check that to make sure.
They didn't, you know, not request any increases this year, for next.
I just remember, I don't know what year it was, but we'd done something and extended the same to them, whatever it was, I don't remember what year it was. So that's going to be not an issue till we talk to the attorney. Because I'd like to keep them all in the same year, makes it easier.
And even if that doesn't get resolved, they'll have to, but instead you can always take care of that in twenty-five, you know, at the start of the year or something like that, you had to... I mean, I guess what I'm saying, you don't have to hold everything else for that.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Well, we could agree to the state mandated raises. No?
So moved.
You can't do it enough?
No.
Yeah, that's an easy one. Do we really have to accept that? I don't think we have a choice, that's going to happen anyways.
Right, we have to accept it?
No, we don't have to, I mean, we can if we want to, but...
But usually we used to, we used to sell them passes because we gave raises to other than the mandated raises, right? So those were already taken care of, so our raise that we gave involved the other positions, that would not stay mandated.
Yeah, because they're going to get them regardless, we can't do anything about it. You know, the PD?
What's that?
We do anything with the PDs now?
Well, I mean, it just depends on what raise you want to give, I think. You want to grant the PD his position?
I bet I want some assurances that the chief deputy is going to be full-time, and that's going to be their only job, is being chief deputy.
That's going to be a table. For that, for that...
Well, can you approve it?
For that price, it's full-time on this paper.
Well, we can approve it pending that...
Pending that they are full-time.
You know, pending that, and obviously having that department head state that that's the case, or... You know, I guess revisit that, I mean, you may know before you get to the actual adoption of the salary orders, too.
So I would assume if you're a full-time PD, you'd have to vacate your private practice.
You could write a budget that they're off, and the salary orders is less. Because if you set the salary at whatever it is, then you, you know, if you set the budget to include it, when it came down to the actual salary orders being adopted, it could be less, because you found out later, hey, that's not going to be the case, so we're going to approve it at this amount instead.
Are we going to put a cap on, we could pin it proving full-time, but put a cap on it that they wouldn't receive any additional funds from like contractual chins or any of the other?
I believe so.
Yeah, just as presented.
There's nothing to suggest or require that be the case, it sounds like that.
So if we require that be the case, and then we've got to make sure that it's a full-time, and it's a pending motion.
Yeah.
I would make that.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Polling, to approve adding a chief deputy's position to the PD with a full-time pay of one-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five, and require that it be a full-time position, and that they would not receive any additional pay from contractual chins or contractual services. Is that all?
Yes.
Are there any other questions or comments? Public input? A roll call, please.
Lemming?
Hi.
Polling?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Middlesoy?
Yes. Motion carries, which that is a portion reimbursable.
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent, and it's pending based on full-time.
That better not be part-time at that rate.
Well, yeah, exactly.
You're talking at least double the going private rate.
I should have that job tomorrow, he said.
It just might be after all.
God, tracks made my resume.
What's that leave?
Highway? Because you've definitely done the longevity, right?
Yeah, number one, you haven't really acted on it either.
Throw a dollar amount out there, I won't entertain either.
Okay, inside, grenade, inside.
So anything is this made in on the sheriff's department?
Nothing on longevity.
So leave it at twenty-four?
Yeah.
Probably, okay.
Leave all the longevity the same.
For the sheriff's department?
For all of them, because we're not going to raise any of the others unless we raise them all. If with the five thousand dollar increase gets the judge's request for their, was it court?
Reporters and bailiffs?
Reporters and bailiffs to the, over their request of forty-five, it's like forty-fives and some change.
This eight-point-two does cover five thousand dollar pay raise, correct, Andrew?
Absolutely.
Jim, with the number you see, how long do you think we could afford this?
I'm not prepared to answer that, I mean, I haven't looked at it like that, I don't know. I mean, obviously it looks great, I mean, that's a big number at this point, I've never seen one that large. And it's, I mean, I remember when there used to be like zero. I don't know, I'm not sure the answer to that, I mean, the foreseeable future looks like, but I'm not sure the legislature is going to do next spring, or...
I think we need to get the message out there to our employees that don't expect this to continue. I mean, we're doing the best we can to get things bumped up, but it could be zero years for a while now.
What was that, the five million, five thousand dollar raise? How much did that cost, what was the number of people times five thousand, I get a number?
One-point-six.
How much?
One-point-six.
One-point-six million?
Three-hundred-and-twenty people.
Pretty close. Next, what you can see then, each year you get one-point-six. Hopefully you get more money coming in to offset that negative, but of course you're going to get raises this year, that's always the intent. So, I mean, there's a cushion there, just...
Yeah, and I keep going back, I mean, between sheriff's department and commissioners, we've approved two million dollars in additionals this year.
Have you already, is that right?
Yeah.
Pigment being the...
But isn't that included in the two?
In that, that makes...
Yeah, inmates and some needles.
Yeah, the additional should be reflected at that, I think it's...
Not all of it, yes.
So how do we go from, I'm curious, maybe we go from the my four B given the proposed raises and ending with eight-point-two to the Wednesday, October second levy and ending with seven-point-two?
Because...
I asked that same question.
Because of the calculation for the insurance, everything was calculated at twenty-one thousand, three hundred to begin with, that was the formula that we used.
That got lowered.
More, an adjustment to the FICA, adjustment to the per, because they were much higher when I presented the budget than what's going to be needed at the adoption.
How do you know that?
calculation of the salaries.
Well, an example, here's a crazy question I might, Mark, when I saw that, if you look at the the four B to the back that shows the eight-point-two million operating balance.
Yeah.
Look at the reassessment fund, line one, three-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollar budget, see that? Reassessment funds is the third column.
Okay.
It says total budget, three-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, two-fifty-seven.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at the other page, it's all about the six-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, so how did that go down on that? Well, she said because insurance contributions to that fund went down from, instead of twenty-one thousand per, seventeen-five per, that sounds like a lot of difference.
Everything was presented higher, and now it's...
That's example, that budget going down, so that means your bottom line goes up.
Yeah, that makes more sense to me, because I was like, I don't know how that...
That was my, ooh, how'd that happen, but even forty-five-hundred dollar...
Per person, right?
Yeah, you're talking at what, twenty-one thousand to seventeen, you have thirty-five-hundred dollar, that's a lot of thirty-five-hundred dollars.
There was...
Is there something else in there? There's got to be something else there, yeah, there's something else.
Right, like that's one-point-one though, thirty-five-hundred per employee.
Yeah, that's just reassessment fund we're talking, you're saying if you look at the overall...
Yeah, I'm just looking at the overall employees.
That would extend, but not all of them gets paid out of these, as far as our grant funds, part of it's out of the EDF fund, so you can't just do that.
Okay. Well, I've been pouring Angie about that all week, so... That's a great problem to have. It's just, are we going to keep getting the income every year, is what I guess is...
You never know that going in, obviously, never, you always think that even if something changes legislatively, there's going to be some kind of replacement mechanism to make up the difference, but, I mean, you don't know that, but you expect that kind of thing.
And looking into your comparisons, we are, we give three percent more than our Wayne County, meaning we pay three percent towards each employee's per, and then our actual lit rate is double theirs.
Our two-point-five-five is double theirs, you mean?
That's an interesting thought.
And keep in mind this, too, I'm not sure how those are broken down, our two-point-five-five could be broken down differently, there's one percent. One of the two-point-five-five goes to proper tax relief, one-point-five-five goes to actually revenue in the fund.
Yeah.
There's there too, let's count the number. Yeah, so almost half the bar goes to property tax relief.
That's got to be getting smaller, doesn't it?
No, you're still getting the one percent, one percent, you know, our money's been growing. Same thing, because it's calculated the same way, if you see the money in the funds going up, money in the property tax relief goes up as well. It's two-point-five-five total, it's just part of it goes to property tax relief, part of it goes to the general fund, part of it goes to the...
Okay, I just, those are just things I noticed in comparison.
And the per, you pay fourteen percent?
Fourteen-point-two percent.
That's been that way for a long time, they haven't changed that either for a while.
Out of the four counties, there are two do it that way, and the other two, the three percent is paid by them.
I still find that more, if you look at the overall pay.
Payroll taxes, since you get paid FICA, you get seven-point-six-five percent, you're paying, in this case, fourteen-point-two percent per. Three percent is the employee shared, eleven-point-two percent is the employee per share, I'm assuming? It's a total of fourteen-point-two. Yeah, I'm sorry that ended up a little bit, but maybe you do mathematical studies to show what you need, so they must be satisfied, at least at this point.
So if Wayne County increases theirs by six or seven percent, and we do ours at five thousand, we're almost the exact same at that point, right? Or we're a little both of them.
Right, and what's the average, is thirty-five thousand a good bottom, our average number for salary employees, is it more than that?
Did we just do that, and we just did it, it was like forty-eight?
Forty-seven, forty-eight.
Was that high, okay, so, five, so it's more than ten percent?
Yeah.
Well, let's say eleven or twelve, maybe, kind of thing. So our average employee, of course, that includes sheriff, department, everybody. Yeah, so it's forty-seven thousand.
Yeah, so right now...
Forty-seven thousand, that's ten-point-six percent.
Like if you look at position by position, I mean, the question, we're still we're going to be lower.
But if some other counties go up five percent, you went up ten-point-six percent.
We're trying, we're desperately trying, but...
Will they remember that, though?
Well, you're delighted. Some will, some will.
I will. I think it would be greatly appreciated, just speaking for my staff, I think it would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, but you know, you got, when you're looking at a five thousand dollar raise for every person, that's a lot of money. And the thing of it is, I think what we got to realize is, when you get this kind of raise, you got to, just like Mike said, we got to see some results. And every, I'm sure every department can save money somewhere, if you really tighten up, you know what I'm saying? The more you tighten up, then the more we give, you know what I mean?
I have been here forever, Jim has been on the council forever, we have cut and cut and cut so many of these departments down to the bare minimum.
That happened at one point, that happened at one point, I...
I've been on this council, everything's been grown by quite a bit.
Back in the day, I worked in 2005, Mike was here then, we did cut from the back pretty, I'll stay down with the, I'm not going to say bare bones, but they were, they were... But I think we probably relaxed over the years or something.
For sure. I can attest, those first years I was on council was not pleasant.
But, you know, human nature is, you're going to remember it for a while, and you're going to forget it after a while, too. I mean, I still... I mean, I still appreciate that, I know, but when it comes next, you're the one another.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, as you're going through that year, you need to try to cut every cut and save where you can save, so you can help us or help the other council give you more money next year. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I could bring to you what was turned back into county general last year because of positions not being filled, of appropriations not being fully spent, so county general does recoup a lot of money at the end of the year because it's not spent, even though it's been appropriated.
I know what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, this is a lot of money to give everybody.
And also, it's going to vary by department, so most of that money that's not spent, it doesn't come from the personnel side. It'd be some extras of per from FICA.
Yep.
If some of the large areas would be, where most of that would come back. It wouldn't be the salary lines too much. If Sheriff's Department has some positions not filled, that could have some detention, or not detention, but the nine eleven, central dispatch, that could be sold, kind of thing. Generally, most departments have their staffing end up in the year, most departments.
Two million in additional still worries me. If we have another year like this year, we give another two million, or maybe it's two and a half, and who knows what else? But all what we do is a crystal ball anyways. You're trying to feel good about where you've been, even better where you're going.
Can I clarify something on your additional? Seven hundred and fifty of it was for the out-of-county inmate. We put that in the budget for next year.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Detention centers in the budget.
The detention center's in there.
But the seven hundred and fifty thousand is still more than we've ever, I mean, we've never done out-of-count replacements for inmates. So even though we put it in the budget, to me, it's still, to me, it's still...
Well, she said it's not going to be additional next year. Your bottom line includes already, is what I'm saying.
I think that's what I'm saying, too, just like, if everybody, even I know it's that's that, but if everybody helps each other, and you can save here or there, you know what I mean, this kind of helps everybody, just try to help everybody to offset everything.
So theoretically, if that works, with what he's saying, and your budget, and your return monies, we could see next year, at the end of next year, having eight or nine million dollars easily, because of those things. Because this is all projected based on today's date moving forward.
It's a projection.
You know, when it comes to that number, really, because the sheriff's department is a large part of the budget, it kind of comes down to their staffing. If their staffing is pretty full throughout the year, you're going to have less return. If they have vacancies on staff that are substantial, you're going to see a larger... If you look at the department, by department, break down what comes back into fund unspent, sheriff's department's going to have a big chunk of that. Per from FICA, because we put some play in there, per from FICA will be a portion, whether something coming back normally. I'm trying to think of another area that might pop out. Those are the big ones. Commissional budget is going to be a piece with our sum, and sheriff's department, usually the two big ones, where you're going to see that happen. Because those are the big dollar items, the big dollar departments.
All I know is that it seems like that unless there's a mistakes in work, which I don't think there is, that we're in a really good financial position. Our employees are not to comparable other counties. We're trying to get there.
True.
Our number one budget goal is to, you know, take care of our employees. You're only as good as those that you can hire, and so we've come a long way. This is another, just a little bump to get us to be competitive, and I'm sure it's going to ebb and flow next year, the year after, that you'll be back to, you know, square one.
I think Mr. Connor said, I mean, it needs to be clear, this isn't the expectation year after. We have opportunity to do something, right, so...
And the fact that the calculations show you aren't exceeding that average of your comfortable counties gives you some, I'll say satisfaction, at least, maybe you'd consider that. And you're in a financial position a lot you should consider. I hope you continue to be in a good position, that's the only thing I say to that.
I make the motion. Five thousand across the board, except as following a timber seat, however, you got revenue.
Timber sure increases part-time?
Part-time.
Second?
Before you go on, since I had increased longevity, the base here for the highway and central dispatch with a forty-five hundred dollar increase, are you now saying you want to include them in this FICA thousand? Or do you want to exceed it?
I knew we were going to get there. Make a motion, and then be, well, what are we going to do with it? What are we going to do with it?
I think we...
Those are the toys, because they're the toys things to think about.
I have all this stuff I got to think about.
It sounds like to me the motion is to do the five thousand across the board and not do the longevity.
Yep.
So that you're saying five thousand for the highway, five thousand for central dispatch?
That's what you're asking, number six.
I know we're not doing the longevity.
Mandatory positions, they already got there.
Yeah, not mandated.
I mean, I'm not making the motion, but...
That's the motion.
Oh, yeah.
Longevity.
No longevity.
But five thousand.
About five thousand.
And there was a second, I'd already there. So regarding discussion, I'm going to make sure, I'm going to ask something else here, too. When you include in central dispatch, for example, does that make their budget exceed their funding capability?
It already had. It already had. We discussed it.
And we fixed it with general fund. General fund is going to make up the difference for... One of the two funds is okay, one of the funds is not. I'm trying to remember which one was which now.
Yeah, twelve point two. If you look at your...
Yeah, we created a budget for...
Yeah, this one's okay right now, so it's got a twenty-three thousand dollar balance, so now you're going to, you're going to give them more raise than what they had in that request, probably. Is that a correct statement?
It's going to break even, because I had done the forty-five hundred per, now it's going to be five thousand.
Well, you only got twenty-three dollars, so you're just not going to get enough.
But I'm taking off the longevity.
How much is that? That's a horse. Usually, that's a small part.
I don't know.
Well, look at it and see, what I'm saying is, you may have to bump up what comes out of the general fund to support E nine one one, by whatever that difference is. And she'll let you know that.
And I want to know.
She'll let you know for the next year sixteen, but it was close enough that that bump could make a difference to be able to fund it right now.
But you say forty-five hundred was in there?
Yes.
So it's only five hundred dollar difference.
But there's twenty-three thousand. No, you're only twenty-three dollars.
Twenty-three, I thought you were...
Twenty-three dollars.
You really are saying that.
Twenty-three dollars.
That's specific.
Yeah, you're breaking. That'll have to be an adjustment, show up and deal with it. Sure, we took money out of telephone.
New department.
Yeah, we did some things to let the general fund pay for instead of E nine one one, I think that we did, like a hundred and sixty thousand or something like that.
Okay. You good, Andrew?
So five thousand across the board, that includes highway, E nine one one, no increase for longevity, does not include anything for the sheriff's department or state mandated raises.
Or elected official.
No, that's part of that, all of that.
Okay, because I thought you said elected officials were exempt this year because of the raise, I guess, so that's including elected officials as well?
That was including everyone, bringing everybody...
But we would have some non-union members in the sheriff's department that this...
That's what I was going to allude to, to, we do have three non-union members, which would be the sheriff, the chief, and the administrative assistant. Those three employees are not union. Would they receive the five thousand?
It always has a past, isn't it, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah.
Does it include commissioners and council?
But isn't there some administrative, there's secretaries?
No, they are union, but they have in the past received when we did. But that's going to be up to you guys.
I thought the ones that were not in the union, the three that you mentioned are not in the union.
Those three are not in the union, but you've got, but you do have sheriff's union employees that work in the administrative side that have received the same reasons that the other employees have received, because I don't believe they are dedicated to one of the units within the contracts.
You could just make non-contractual employees, we get the five thousand raise, which you said. The people that are not included in the sheriff's contract would be the ones that would get that raise up. Does that make sense? But we always look at the question like I just submitted ago, ask, commissioners and council salaries also come into play here, too, when you're making sure what that motion covers.
That five thousand dollars was included on all elected officials, all employees, and that was bringing them up to the average.
Anything else?
Is there anything else? I have a motion from Mr. Polling.
You're good, I'm just, I'm not saying, no, don't do it. I can't think of anybody else I could include. I know it always comes up with it later, I always think about that one.
When I'm doing the finalization, we get the numbers to you. If I run across anything that I questioned, I will be sure to bring that to you guys.
Obviously, when we adopt a budget, whatever's in there when we adopt it is what we're going to be adopting.
It is, yeah.
I have a motion for Mr. Polling, a second for Mr. Scott to approve a five thousand dollar across-the-board raise, excluding the sheriff's union, excluding the state mandated raises, but including the highway, central dispatch, and all county employees and elected officials.
It probably excludes, like we did the public defenders, we...
We've already...
Yeah, excludes the prosecutor.
I don't have to take care of all those, so...
It does include the public defender and staff. I did have a question about the public defender, the chief, Bruce's position, do, we can go on. Was that a five thousand dollar increase, or what he requested, or?
On the paper, it says in there. But then you'd have prosecutor's staff that would be included with it.
Yes, the prosecutor's staff. Now, he requested maybe like a two thousand or three percent increase for his staff. I would do the calculation to make it out to a total of five, yes, and I did do that on that.
And the public defenders below Bruce will get this, five?
Five.
Is there anything else?
So that last part by the two gets excluded into five thousand, now that last part of the sentence on number two?
Yeah.
Is there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Polling?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Hicks?
Yes.
Lemming?
Aye.
Middleworth?
Yes. Just remember, this can always be changed.
The salary ordinance can be, you know, it hasn't been adopted yet, so...
Is that all you got to do, something about the United?
I appreciate all your work on doing that.
I just know the employees deserve, you guys know that. It is a hard number to score of, but...
Well, I remember all the years of zero, and several awful years of zero, and so...
Or some got some, some got none.
Unfortunately, some of those people have moved on, and they're no longer here.
They took away.
They did, they did.
Fifteen hundred dollars, I think the biggest one. I just want to go to the shop.
We still have discussion about ARPA funds. Frank can make it. We have a meeting Friday at nine o'clock with the commissioner. Is there a way you could be there, Mr. Polling?
When?
Friday at nine. Mr. Connor can't be there, so is there anybody else available?
Yeah, I'll be there.
I know Mr. Lemming is already tied up, and I would assume he's here at school, so...
Commissioners?
Our kids are educated. You should use a belt.
I don't know what you're using.
Use a Lapsian pressure.
Yeah, it does.
Our next, our next regular meeting is Wednesday, October the sixteenth. And we still need to meet, the unit committee needs to meet to discuss the sheriff's request before that meeting, the sixteenth, so send me some dates that you're available. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Thank you. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Meeting adjourned.